Folks, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of November 13th, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. Steve, for the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the big screen, you can see what we'll be discussing this evening. It's a long list. We don't expect it to be too long, a meeting tonight, but we do have a lot of resolutions that relate to procuring goods and services for winter-related activities this evening. And in the audience tonight, we have a bunch of folks from the Bard Civic Engagement who are here to take a look at the local government in action. Let us know how we do, okay? Okay, so we're going to start tonight. This is the first meeting of the month. We are going to start as we do each meeting with a supervisor's report, and that is a report of the financial condition of the town at the end of the previous month. And for the folks at home, this is for the period ending October 31st, 2018. We started the month with an opening balance of $5,384,000 and change. We had receipts of $685,000, and we dispersed over $1 million, leaving an ending balance of $4,959,358. And Harry, I know you're gonna ask about it.
I already looked at it.
You did, okay. Our community preservation fund is now, what, over $1 million? One hundred, I'm sorry, a million, $140,643. And that is the fund that we use to preserve open spaces.
Purchase development rights.
Yep. Okay, in the report, you'll notice we had a quarterly sales tax, $90,000. We closed out the rest of the funding for our municipal innovation grant. We also received reimbursement from NYSERTA for $25,000 for our clean energy communities projects. We completed the installation. With the supervisor's report, you have your bank statements as well. Are there any questions about the report that you have? Hearing none. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the supervisor's report? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We also have some budget adjustments from our bookkeeper, Ann Conway. Some small amounts. The larger being some more money being allocated to maintenance of St. Margaret's, additional revenues from the cell tower and from fines and bail, clerk fees, and more appropriation to finish out the final payment on the tennis court. We did a total rebuild of the tennis courts in the rent part. And moving money over from previous year appropriations for the speed trailer that we'll be discussing for approval tonight. Are there any questions about the budget adjustments? If not, a motion to accept them?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Sue McCann is not with us tonight. Claire Horst is here filling in for her. So we'll do the clerk's report at our second meeting of the month, and we'll go into announcements. And I have a few announcements I'd like to let you know. The other evening, the town board passed the 2019 budget. If you would like to see what that looks like, that's on the town website. Thanksgiving dinner. As she does each year, Patty Bowman from Holy Cow is once again doing this wonderful event. It's Thanksgiving Day, 12:30 at the Red Hook Firehouse just around the corner here on Firehouse Lane. It's a free Thanksgiving meal for anyone who wants to come and have dinner with members in your community. And so that's a one seating only at 12:30. So once again, thank you to Patty and Holy Cow for that. I regret to say, winter is upon us way sooner than many of us wanted it to be. So as a reminder, parking rules actually start Thursday, just in the nick of time, because it looks like we may be getting snow Thursday night. So November 15th through April 1st, there's no parking on town roads between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And did I say April 1st and it's April 15th? Is that... Or is it April 1st? It is April 1st, okay, good, got that right. Okay. Also would like to let you know, since winter is coming, that there are programs available to those who are income-eligible. The heating and assistance program through Community Action on East Market Street, eligible for families of four who make $55,000 or less. Applications open up this week. You can get assistance with fuel, oil, and propane to heat your home, whatever you use. NDP is having a food drive this weekend, 17th and 18th, from 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock at Topps Grocery Store. And then the other thing we would like to let you know is that we had a culvert failure on Stony Brook Road. So if you are intending to use Stony Brook Road at all this winter, we would like to let you know that because of when the failure occurred, the replacement is likely not to happen until the springtime. We have our engineers already working on a schedule for us and design plans. But Stony Brook Road, if you need to access it, the way up is through North Road to Sing Stack or from the north coming down Woods Road. So between 9G and Sing Stack, that will be closed due to the failure of a culvert under Stony Brook Road. And I believe those are all of the announcements that I have. Does anyone else have an announcement?
We could just maybe bring up that the senior services committee had their successful weatherization event on October 30th. And the reason I'm putting this in announcements is that they do want to hold some more, so stay tuned. And I think there will be one in February, and maybe even later too. But there will be more opportunities for seniors to come and sign up for weatherization programs. Probably not before winter at this point, but they do want to do more programming. So definitely be in contact if you want more information.
Great. As always, it's an opportunity to remind you, if you want to be notified about anything from road closures, and hopefully we won't have too many of them with these winter storms, but we did last March, we suggest that you sign up on our website for notify me, and you can select whatever topics you want to be notified about, either through email or text alert. And it's a way for you to stay up to the minute on what's happening in your community. Okay. That's all I have for announcements. Anybody else before we get to public comment? If not, all right, public comment? Would somebody like to make some public comments? Linda?
Linda Keeling, Pitter Lane, Red Hook. I have two issues. The first being, I was in shock when I saw in the newspaper that the town was given an audit, and the normal audit requires 10% on the budget. However, you had 313%. To me, that's like taking money out of the taxpayer's pocket. I want to know what you're going to do to correct this. Want to adjust, say anything?
Sure. I think, I'm not sure what you're referring to is 10% that audit. We did have an audit of a period from 2013 through 2017, and there were some recommendations in the audit. And one of the recommendations was that we not have, that we not appropriate contingency funds that exceeded 10% of the annual budget. We have not done that in the last couple of years. I think that was from prior years in that period. It erroneously, the original report purported that our fund balance increased by 313%. It has increased by 213%. For the folks at home or in the audience, a fund balance, unappropriated fund balance is essentially a rainy day fund where you haven't yet designated what you're using those funds for, either because you're in the middle of trying to determine the cost of capital projects or because you're preparing for something in the future. And so, yes, we have increased our fund balance in part, proudly to say, because we've done a great job, all of our departments, in managing our expenses as compared to the budget. And so we do have some money that we can use towards what we know to be capital projects coming along the way. We just spoke about one just a moment ago, which is a culvert failure, which is going to cost $200,000, so, yep.
Okay, my second issue again is the website. It's still not up to par. I have given the whole list that I emailed to Sarah. The only thing it really did was to make it secure. Thank you for that. But the other things don't work. I tested out again what I sent you and the links, and they don't work.
Can you just say again, do you mean the minutes and agendas or what?
No, these are just certain pages that I've had pointed out to you. But also, I'm not getting notifications.
Okay.
And I tried signing up again.
Did you get any, you didn't get any today? Because the highway department sent...
Oh, Linda, can I respond to that? I wasn't getting them also for a while, and apparently my spam folder was catching them, so check your spam.
I checked.
Okay. Good. All right, well, just keep forwarding us feedback and folks at home.
What I can do is, I can go back into the system and see if you're in there, because I don't know what else to do otherwise. If you're listed on the list of subscribers, then I'm sure...
I start that for everything.
Okay. And you don't get anything?
I don't get anything now. I was getting some before. That's why when I wasn't getting anything in the future.
If you're listed in there, there's nothing I can do because it shows that the system has you. I don't know of anybody else that's having that problem across the board. There was one specific list that had a problem with the way the subscription was assigned. One specific one. But you should have still been getting like highway department and planning and all that other stuff. So, I mean, there haven't been that many notifies, right? Notifications.
Linda, were you, or text or email, or both?
Email, okay.
Yeah, so, I don't know. I mean, I got two highway emails today. Either on the general list and the highway list.
Yeah, one from the homepage and one from the highway department. And still the pages look bad.
The look isn't going to change. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm sorry that you're unhappy with it, but you can't bring it up anymore because we're not going to change it, okay? So, I mean, you can bring it up actually. I don't want to tell you you can't. I'm just letting you know. It's not because we're not hearing you.
We're not getting our $24,000 worth.
I disagree with you, but that's fine. You can have your opinion, I really don't mind. But we will be changing some of the photos. So the photos will be looking better, but I know one of your issues is that you can't see the photos on some of the sub-pages and that. That's not going to change. So I'll check into your subscription though, because I definitely want to make sure you're getting those.
I want you to know though that Jackie's been working with the tree reservation.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that site's been updated and looks good.
Right.
I would like the other people to update their sites because the information needs to be out there.
It's up to the committees, it's up to the information. Yeah, no, I agree with you, and I wish everybody was as up to date as the tree committee is, because you have worked hard to make it so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And if the folks at home are using the website and you have suggestions for how we can improve it, please send us an email or pick up the phone or stop off and let us know. Okay. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none. We'll jump right in. We have a bunch of resolutions related to procuring items for the winter. And let's see, where do we have? Number one, here we go. A resolution authorizing purchase of road services and materials for 2019. And for the folks in the audience, as the local government, we're stewards of the taxpayer money, and so when we go to procure a service, we go out to bid, and we are required by law to take the lowest responsible bid. That means anybody who's been engaged in these types of services, who has been able to deliver those services in a responsible way, we are obligated to take that lowest bid unless we, you know, come across something that tells us that we can't rely on that service or item. And so our highway department, our highway superintendent who's here, Teresa Burke, prepares these bid specifications with our purchasing officer. And the results of those bids, when they come back to your department, you analyze them and prepare tabulation sheets for us and make recommendations. And so what we are doing with resolution number 69 is entertaining authorizing the purchase of the services and materials. And Teresa, did you want to say anything about this in particular? Or it's pretty straightforward?
No, this one's straightforward.
Okay. So we have these items and the recommended vendor for the various items based upon the bids that they placed. And this is for the coming year, that's for 2019. And you can see some of the items that we go out to bid for to be used in developing our roads. Okay, so this is resolution number 69 dated November 13th of 2018, authorizing the purchase of road services and materials pursuant to town procurement policy for 2019, whereas proposals were publicly opened and read on October 25th after due notice in accordance with the town's procurement policy. And whereas the highway superintendent has received the proposals shown in the attached tabulation for the materials indicated. And whereas the highway superintendent has determined that the proposals for the following products from the indicated vendors represent the least cost to the town after taking into account the location and the FOB price of the product at the place and time and with the quantities anticipated to be needed for the calendar year 2019. Now therefore be a resolve that the town board of the town of Red Hook does hereby authorize the highway superintendent to accept the foregoing proposals, and I so move. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Resolution number 70 is now related to the purchase of hot-mix asphalt. Okay, and this resolution reads similar to 69. Public bids being opened on October 25th. And there's a tabulation sheet and a recommendation that we award to A. Calaruso &amp; Son for hot-mix asphalt. And it's a resolution 78.
And Calanan for certain items.
And Calanan. For items 6F top half-inch and item 7F top quarter-inch armor coat. Okay. And I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The third resolution is for ice control of bracelet.
Well, Bert, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that on hot-mix asphalt for the coming year, there's in some places almost a 20% increase in price based on the liquid asphalt index. So it's going to cost a little more next year. So that's what we have to do.
Right. Now, I'm curious. I noticed that just in the last week, the price of oil has dropped dramatically. But we may not be able to take advantage of that then, so.
Well, no, it has to be, they base it on whatever the price is that month they purchase it. So we won't know until August. For September, what the actual price will be.
Well, then, we can keep our fingers crossed because I saw that the price has dropped just 7% the last few days. So let's hope that continues for everyone. All right. Ice control. That's resolution 71 dated November 13th. We have bids from A. Calaruso, Red Wing, and Calanan. And that the lowest responsible bid was from Red Wing Properties. And I would make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Well, should we skip to five and just keep working on these exciting items here? We have five, there we go. Five. It's a resolution to award bid for snow clearing and ice control. We have sidewalks that we clear here on Route 9. And so we go out to bid for that service as well. It's resolution number 72.
But the $700, there was only one bid, right?
There's only one bid.
Is Ted okay with that figure of $700?
Yeah. So you have a communication from our purchasing manager recommending that we go for. And it's the same vendor that did the sidewalks this year in 2018. And so the price has changed because we have more sidewalk.
Oh, right, we doubled it.
Right.
It's a change.
Yeah. Okay, so that's resolution number...
Tell Brenda that.
I think Brenda will be okay with it. All right. Resolution 72 to award the bid for snow clearing and ice control on the town of Red Hook managed sidewalks. And the award goes to Busper and Sons, and I so move. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we...
So, on the subject of civic engagement though, you have to understand that these local governments they get all excited about building sidewalks, which is wonderful, right, for everybody? Especially college students that have to walk here and there. But then you have to follow that up when you come up the next year to increase your budget to shovel the sidewalks, because now you have more sidewalks. So you have to think ahead for all those kind of things. So nothing is easy.
Devin and I are going to be working on radiant heating for sidewalks, so we don't have to do this.
How much is that going to cost?
Yeah. And...
You could grant.
And what about the pollution from... From radiant? Yeah, well... Solar-powered radiant sidewalks? To heat it, we have to use fuel to heat it. Well, no, we'll use the sun to heat it. But then we have to buy that.
That's true. Or we can just get a shovel and start digging real deep.
Okay. So we have item number four on the agenda is a resolution requesting a modification of the speed limit on Bud's Corners Road. We've had a series of a few accidents once again on very windy Bud's Corners Road. A road that has an appropriately high-speed limit. And so we have a resolution, Harry, I think it's been modified, hopefully to address your concern. It references the recommendation of the upper Route 9G study report, which was a product of a year and a half of work with state, county, and local and community representatives. And so the recommendation there was to study the lowering of the speed to 45 miles an hour. This resolution, however, Harry, now says from 55 to 45 or to such lower limit as may be indicated in the study of traffic conditions. And that would be something that... There is an error here. It suggests that Linden Avenue was 45. It's not, it's 35. On the southern portion of South Road... From the village line, visit the village line to the picture. The picture says 35. And it's pictured as a sign that says, "End 35 mile an hour." Okay, so why don't we just say was previously reduced? That's fine. Right, and then we'll just leave out the number there? Okay. I've tried a few times to approach 55 on the Bud's Corner. And to save myself, I quickly gave it up. And 45, I see, is a bit of a challenge, at least with a SUV like I have. Some of the cars I used to have in my younger days would have done it. Okay. Well, that's what their study will show. They'll test the prevailing speed of the drivers. They'll look at the geometry. They'll look at the development along the roadway. They'll analyze it and hopefully come back with an answer to our request to lower the speed level. And this would be resolution number 73. Requesting modification of speed limit on Bud's Corners Road from Wells Back to Route 9G. And for the folks at home, we will remind you, all we can do is advocate on your behalf to lower speed limits where appropriate. It's actually the New York State Department of Transportation that actually determines what we can and cannot do with speed limits. Why, I'm not sure. It's resolution 73. With a second, aye?
Second.
Okay, Harry. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Okay. Back to speed. We've been talking about getting a speed trailer, monitored trailer. In fact, we agreed to get one and to use it along 9G and River Road as part of our agreement with Department of Transportation. And this is the one that's recommended to us, very similar to the one that we used when we rented one from the village of Rhinebeck. The village of Red Hook will be paying a third of the cost to acquire this trailer because they want to use it from time to time. Another good shared service. This trailer is easily towed from place to place. And it will register and read out the speed.
Who's towing it?
The police are towing it from, they'll be the ones responsible for it. Would you like to see the picture of it? Plenty you should ask. I had a suspicion somebody would like to see the picture. So that's what the, that's what the trailer looks like for the folks at home. And so it will read your speed. It will compare it to the speed limit. What it will do for us and for the police who will be monitoring the roads is that it will give you those reports. Christine, last year when we did this on certain roads, we got reports of how many cars, when they were traveling, what speeds they were traveling, so that the police can get an idea of when speeding is an issue and be there during those times of days and night. And so we'll be getting regular reports on that as well, and we'll be able to furnish that to Department of Transportation. And I think it will help with a lot of our advocacy that we're doing here. Okay? So, that is resolution number 73.
74?
74. Never know, I'm good at math. 74, and that is a... And that is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of a speed monitor trailer dated November thirteenth, an iso move. We need a price not to exceed. I would say that we should put, well, you have the information I sent to you digitally. I would say not to exceed twelve thousand. It's gonna come in under that, but we don't wanna have to go back and modify.
So, that would be the total price, not just our part?
The total price. That would be the total price, cause we're going to acquire it and build a village for their share of it. And I think it's a good arrangement. I'm sure we'll be using it a lot more than they will, cause we have a lot more length of roadway than they do. But it's, uh, something that both municipalities have wanted for, for some time. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Need a second?
I don't think we have a second.
Oh, we didn't get a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in-
But how are we gonna keep people from stealing it?
It's gonna be chained to something. Everybody wants a speed trailer. Well, you'd be surprised. There, there are actually municipalities do want these things.
I wonder if they want one on a college campus.
Yeah.
They have one. They have one.
They have one.
Well, you have permanent ones. This is-
You have permanent ones. This is moving.
This is much larger.
Yeah. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Phil. Getting us to think about the things we wouldn't immediately think about. But we did. Resolution in support of New York State Municipal Workers' Comp Alliance Plan Document and Self Insurance. So, in previous meetings, we've discussed that the county has revised its plan, of which we are a member, for work, workers' comp. Um, and we went out and received bids from other entities, including Comp Alliance, which is the NYMER farm, and a larger pool of members throughout New York State. Um, they are a very, um, well-funded, uh, plan. And they have quoted us, um, a price that is six thousand dollars. Roughly six thousand dollars less than what the county plan is that we would be in. And I don't think the county plan, in fact, I know the county plan isn't fully funded. And so, it's, uh, both the, uh, bookkeeper and my recommendation that we make a move over to Comp Alliance and save the taxpayers some money and be in a fiscally more sound group. And so, you've been sent all that information. And for the folks at home, we will show you. There's a document, but I think folks are probably more interested in just the price comparison, which is not here for some. It's on seven. There we go, yeah.
But the next one over.
There we go, okay. We'll blow it up. So, there are various entities we could join. New York State Insurance Fund being the highest priced. Um, you could see what we used to pay in Dutchess County Workers' Compensation Plan and how to jump when that we talked about unexpected expenses. And so, we woke up one day and were told that our actual was going to go up by two hundred percent. They revised the figure and came up with a proposal of something just shy of that. And so, it's our recommendation that we join Comp Alliance and spread the risk out with the larger pool of municipalities.
Now, have we been accepted by Comp Alliance upon our application?
Uh, yes, as soon as you pass these two, uh, resolutions and I submit, um, some paperwork tomorrow, and we need to do it by December first.
We call upon-
Okay, so we have two resolutions here. One is to approve the plan document. And I sent you their financials, so you can take a look at their financials as well. And so, resolution seventy-five would be to support the Municipal Workers' Compensation Alliance Plan Document. And whereas the town is eligible for membership in the plan. And we made an independent investigation of the plan and reviewed the plan document. And we've concluded that it would be in the interest of the town of Red Hook to participate in it. Now therefore be it resolved that the town shall enter into membership of the plan pursuant to section fifty subdivision three A of the Workers' Compensation Law. Supervisor Robert McKeener, or in his absence, Deputy Supervisor O'Neill is hereby authorized and instructed to execute the plan's charter document on behalf of the town of Red Hook. And the custody of all joint plan monies by the plan administrator under the plan is hereby approved. An iso move.
Second.
All right, I think Sarah got in there under the wire. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Uh, the next resolution, number seventy-six is that, uh, we have determined that it's in the best interest of the town to become a member of the group known as New York State Municipal Workers' Compensation Alliance. And just for the folks at home, um, NYMER, the New York Municipal Insurance, why am I blanking on the R, Chris? Blanking on the R of NYMER.
Uh, reciprocal?
Reciprocal, thank you. Um, is a collection of municipalities, villages and towns throughout New York State that have organized over the last thirty-some odd years to, uh, cooperatively purchase services, and in this case, insurance. And so, we've been with NYMER for our other insurance, um, and it has worked out very well for us. So, that's resolution seventy-six to join the Municipal Workers' Compensation Alliance. Iso move.
Second.
Second.
Christine's second, you're-
Okay, further discussion?
Here.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is effective January first of twenty nineteen. And those numbers are available, um, in our twenty nineteen budget as well. Folks. We have just about concluded our town board meeting for this evening. We had some very, um, sort of straightforward items on the agenda. I encourage you, however, if you wanna find out about local government, you are welcome to watch other meetings. You can do it on YouTube, I think, as I mentioned to you earlier. You can search Red Hook Town Council Meeting. And, uh, I feel confident it will helping, help you with any, uh, sleeping issues that you may or may not have. Um, correspondence? I don't have any correspondence that I haven't shared with you since the last meeting. Is there anybody who has any correspondence that you would like to discuss tonight? If not, we would entertain another public comment, uh, period. Would anybody like to make any public comment? Okay, hearing none, I would like to make a motion that we go into an attorney-client, uh, session. And, uh, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you all at home for joining us. And we'll see you soon.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.